Councilmember Moore.
Present.
President.
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 Mayor Durham.
Present.
All present, we have a call.
All right, with the call in, present, I'll call this meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled meeting for August 11th, 2016. We'll open up with a word of prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Moore, feel the lead us in a word of prayer and Jamie Coon lead us in the pledge afterwards.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this day and for your blessings. And Father, we pray for wisdom today and guidance in all that we do and the decisions we make. Father, I pray that it would be for the betterment of this community. And Father, we do thank you for this community and we pray that your blessings upon it and all that we do. Keep us safe this day in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, in front of you have a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. You should have also got an email copy of this. If there's no additions, changes, or deletions to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion to approve and second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of approving the minutes, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, then minutes are approved. We want to welcome everybody to the meeting today. We have about a normal crowd today because we haven't had a lot of ballplayers here lately. But we did have some special guests with us today and we'll be hearing from those guests in just a few minutes. And so we'll move on down through the agenda. I've got one piece of business that I want to bring to you today. We have some representatives here from Cabinets to Go. And we're going to let Mr. Hadley, our economic developer, get up and speak to us today and introduce the guests that are with us today.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to present this morning. I'm very honored and happy to present our newest industry to Lawrence County, locating in the South Jones Building. And the company, as you all know from the press this week, is Cabinets to Go. And today we have with us Jerry Burdock, CEO, President. We hear from Jerry in second. And we also have Joe Dennett, who is part of the management and sales team. And Sarah Valencia here also, who makes the move. And so, without further ado, Jerry, could you share some words with us? I'll say one thing. I think you've already read it, but it's an initial $9 million investment and 88 new jobs. So we're tickled. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. To say we're excited to be here is an understatement. I've brought my family here now, closed down a house in Lawrenceburg two days ago. And family's excited to put our roots down here as a permanent home. So we're going to be a big part of this community and get involved as much as possible. But as far as Cabinets to Go, we're excited to utilize the labor force here in Lawrenceburg and get people to work. And heard a lot of good things. So we're just excited to be here and get started and become a part of the community. So, thank you for having us.
Well, thank you.
Chris, I'll turn the table over to you for your business this morning.
Okay. First, I'd like to congratulate two of our employees, the first being Doug Edwards on achieving his IMPA HR Senior Professional Certification. That allows Doug to better service as a human resource director, as a public sector human resource senior level management class that he passed. And so I just wanted to congratulate Doug on that. Also, congratulations to Scott Durham with the Police Department. Scott was promoted to lieutenant earlier this week. Scott's been with the department on and off for several years. He'll be a valuable addition to the management. So I'd like to congratulate him on that. Also, we have two police officers that are going to be leaving the Police Department. Again, Tennessee Highway Patrol has offered some positions. We've got two leaving. Also have two firemen leaving, one for personal reasons and the other for retirement. Jerry Campbell will be retiring, so Captain Campbell will also be leaving. Also, unfortunately, engine two had a wreck coming back from a shop in Murfreesboro. It's not our driver that was driving the engine. Repair's been made. They were bringing the engine back to Lawrenceburg. They had a wreck and we're still trying to evaluate the amount of damage to that and work through the insurance companies with the damage to that engine. That is all I have this morning.
All right. Jamie, you got golf today?
I sure do.
All right, thank you, Chris. Do you have any department managers to report today?
Ethan, did you have anything else that you'd like to report on this morning? Not a department, but if we have Ethan speaking, a little department manager.
I'll just tie it up here real quick and just say that the Chamber appreciates the support of the Mayor and the Council and the citizens to welcome our industries and help us grow the ones that we have here. And I'll just state for the record that like any other project that the Chamber works, you know, we start with a code name and we try to keep the information as close to the best as we can. This one started last October as we gave it a real secret code name, Project October. And it came to fruition here in the month of August, nearly a year later. And that's kind of the way things work in economic development. So the patience and persistence of the Mayor and the Council and the public as we recruit these new companies and grow our community is greatly appreciated by the Chamber. And we're just glad to be a part of the team here.
All right, we'll let the minutes reflect that we do have a copy of AUS financials for the month of June on file. I don't have any old business in front of me, so we'll move on to new business and legal issues with Mr. Betts. I'll turn the table over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First matter this morning is to have a public hearing on the resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to approve the issuance of bonds by the Health and Educational Facilities Board of the County of Franklin, Tennessee for the benefit of BTT Development, the second LP and Village Associates LP. This is to comply with Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code. Mr. Russell Holloway is here. He's purchasing and rehabbing several apartment complexes throughout the state of Tennessee and issuing a little over $25 million in bonds. The City of Lawrenceburg has nothing to do with it. We're not borrowing the money or anything like that. But the code does require the governing body of any city that property is located in that are affected by the bonds to take up a resolution on that. So would anyone care to address the board concerning this resolution of the Health and Educational Facilities Board of the County of Franklin this morning? Seeing no one wanting to address the board, Mayor, we'll close the public hearing on that. Ordinance 1179 is an ordinance to the City of Lawrenceburg, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, ending June 30, 2017. This is the annual budget. Bring to everyone's attention that the tax rate adopted with this budget ordinance is 1.4368 per hundred dollars of assessed value. And that is the new certified tax rate as provided to us by the Tax Assessor for 2016. So ordinance 1179 is here for first reading today.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Will bring us to discussion. Gentlemen, the only thing I want to say is that Chris and Linda and Doug and all the department heads, we have been dealing with this since the first of the year and finally have, last week, got everything hammered out. Appreciate your persistence and your hard work and quite frankly, the sacrifices that's been made to departmental budgets to make this budget meet. We had a couple of goals in mind this year, and one of our top goals is to make smart investments into what I consider to be our greatest asset, which is our employees. And so we were able to do that with this budget. And I want to say thank you to all the department heads that got together and made that possible. So those are my comments on this ordinance. Appreciate you. Any other comments on ordinance number 1179? Seeing none, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1179, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And ordinance number 1179 moves to second reading.
Next is ordinance 1180, an ordinance to amend 1142 to repeal or amend certain titles of Lawrenceburg Municipal Code to hit Title VII, Chapter IV, and to amend or repeal ordinances or partial ordinances in conflict here with. Ordinance 1180 is here for second, final reading today.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion on ordinance number 1180? Seeing no discussion on the ordinance 1180, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1180, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And ordinance number 1180 is approved.
Just to clarify the record, Mayor, that was for second, final reading. Ordinance 1181, an ordinance to amend ordinance 1161 entitled Budget Appropriations of Revenue and Expenditures for the 1516 fiscal year for the City of Lawrenceburg. This is to amend last year's budget to reflect actual taxes received and expenditures made. It is here for first reading today.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure on ordinance?
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion on this ordinance, if you're in favor of this ordinance, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And that ordinance moves to second reading.
Next gentleman is resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to approve the issuance of bonds by the Health and Educational Facilities Board of the County of Franklin, Tennessee for the benefit of BTT Development, the second LP and Village Associates LP. We have had the public hearing on that, and that resolution's for reconsideration today.
Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion?
This is part of that first thing we had, right?
Yes.
We're not borrowing any money, it's just approved because of a group of people.
The property's located here in Lawrenceburg. Yeah, do you mind elaborating on it a little bit?
Sure.
What's going to take place up there?
Hi, my name's Russell Holloway. I live here in Lawrenceburg. What I've been doing for the past few years is buying rural development properties and renovating them. They're all in the 25 to 31 years old, and they're just due to be updated. What I'm proposing to do for this year is a portfolio of properties, one of which includes Lawrenceburg Village. It also includes Savannah, Waynesboro, Centerville, Spring Hill. So just a group of all local properties. And because financing's difficult for these smaller properties in smaller towns, I'm working with Tennessee Housing Development Agency and USDA Rural Development on Financing. One of the incentives that THDA offers is an allocation of the state of Tennessee's tax exempt bond authority. So as opposed to getting each jurisdiction to issue tax exempt bonds, which most of them don't even have an active bond issuing entity, Franklin County has agreed to issue them for the entire state portfolio, which helps us because we don't have to spend as much money on accountants and attorneys and bond underwriters and all of those issues, and we can put more money into the rehab. But as a condition of Franklin County doing it, each jurisdiction where the money is going to be spent has to have a public hearing and has to authorize us to use those proceeds in their jurisdiction.
One of the things I guess I'm most interested in is what we see from it as far as, is it going to be, will the rehab be all inside work or will there be some outside work?
It's outside inside. They're complete gut rehabs, new doors, windows, roofs, kitchens, baths, HVAC systems. So everything except the studs and the bricks basically goes. We usually repave, new landscaping, new lighting, camera systems. So it really brings it up to where it's a new apartment complex.
Correct. We're building a new road right in front of it, too.
I know.
And we know where you can get some cabinets.
We have, we've got special discounts on apartment complexes.
I was thinking the same thing.
Right here. Couldn't get my car out fast here.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight units.
Is that what is commonly referred to as Claymore Apartments or?
Next to them.
First Baptist Church, so that's the one between them.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your interest in doing that and thank you for your investment in Lawrenceburg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, after the comments we've heard, do we have any more comments on this resolution? Seeing none, if you're in favor of this resolution, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that resolution is approved.
Next gentleman, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to authorize Terry Beecham and Brent Hunter as signatory on specified police accounts for the City of Lawrenceburg at First Farmers Bank and to remove Judy Moore and Don Laws from said accounts. Resolution also specifies that Darren Goolsby and Chris Schaefer continue to be authorized signatories on that, and that resolution's for reconsideration.
Our resolution says to remove Chris Schaefer.
That's what line says as well.
You didn't read your emails, did you?
I'll read the resolution.
That was an error.
You updated, you got a, okay, as long as the resolution's been updated, I don't have a problem with it. All right, good.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution's approved.
Next gentleman, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to amend Resolution 2011 118A, the City of Lawrenceburg Debt Management Policy in accordance with the procedures as required by the Comptroller's Office of the State of Tennessee. That resolution's for reconsideration today.
Gentlemen, if you'll allow me, we'll step out of order, and we have our Bond Counsel here who can elaborate on this just a little bit because this is a requirement from the state of Tennessee and something that his office has helped to draw up also. So CL Overman is here with us today. And CL, if you will, if you'd care to address the board on this and maybe the bond refinancing that's next, I'd be glad to hear your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. CL Overman with Cumberloin Securities in Knoxville. Good to be with you all today.
Good morning.
On a nice summer morning. Normally, on these refundings, which we've talked about before, Mayor, it's okay, I'll give a little broader overview on where the debt policy changes fit into the big picture. Normally, when we discuss a refunding like we're talking about here, which is basically just a refinancing of existing debt to a lower interest rate to save dollars, that's what we focus on. And indeed, the refunding that you'll consider with a later resolution on your agenda saves the city about a half a million dollars. There is a general fund piece of it that by going from a higher interest rate to about a 170 rate between now and 2025, will save the general obligation side of the city about 113 or better thousand dollars, and will save the water and sewer system in excess of a half a million dollars. Now, we also have to take into consideration that you've already done. You may recall earlier this year, we did some additional water and sewer refunding earlier this year. So we've had the discussion before about staying under $10 million for your total issuance for a given calendar year so that we can maintain what are called bank qualified rates for you, which means you get better interest rates by 25 to 50 basis points. So the context here is you have a refunding, you can save money by refinancing old 2008 bonds to 2016 bonds and saving in excess of a half a million dollars. Normally, that's sort of where the conversation would end because it's a good refunding, it's feasible, it's cost effective, and it makes sense to do. On the other hand, over the last couple of years, Comptroller's Office has focused more and more on what they call balloon debt. Well, we don't call it balloon debt in the, should I say the real world? We call it structured debt. Back when, in the earlier part of the century, which is, sounds strange to say, when the city and the utilities had to do a major treatment plant project, which required both a state revolving loan fund, loan, I believe that number was about $13 million, as well as additional general obligation backwater and sewer bonds to get your treatment plant built so you could meet EPA regulations and all the state regulations that you had to meet. The way that debt at the time was structured was you had this SRF loan, which did most of your plant, but the additional money that had to be issued in the form of bonds had to be structured around that SRF loan. And the only way to do that without really putting stress on your ratepayers was to structure that other piece of debt basically on the back end of the SRF loan. And that just means farther out. In other words, you were paying principal out beyond the end of the SRF loan, which is about 2027. It's the way financing has been done for centuries, literally. There's upsides and downsides. The downside is you're paying more interest because you've got more principal out farther. That's not a surprise to anybody. On the other hand, you're spreading the cost of that facility over a reasonable amount of time, and you're optimizing, you're minimizing the impact on your ratepayers. They're still paying for it, and yeah, they're probably paying a little more interest because you've got additional principal in the out years. But overall, you've got level debt. And you are just doing what you have to do from a political point of view, from a feasibility point of view, and from a community impact point of view. You're doing what you have to do to get the project done and meet the regulations, but at the same time not beat your ratepayers over the head. Anyway, the comptroller has gotten on to this concept of balloon debt. To me, balloon debt implies that you borrow money and you put the principal way out years from now, and you don't have any real income source or revenue source to pay for that principal when it comes due. Well, that's not what you do, and that's not what we ever do. We do structured debt. And Joyce, if you'll pass that little chart down, I'll show you kind of what your water and sewer debt looks like.
Here's what your current water and sewer debt looks like. You can see it's a nice level structure out to 2025 till other bonds start being paid, and your debt structure at that time starts declining. If you look at the purple, that's at the very bottom, we call these debt stacks. What this amounts to is the debt service principal that's being paid off every year. But if you look at the purple at the bottom, that's the SRF loan that we had to structure around back years ago to enable you to do your project. And then you see the darker purple, which is the 2008 bonds that we're refunding. What the comptroller's office essentially is doing is instead of looking at this as a comprehensive overview of your debt, they're sort of pulling out that one bond issue and saying, oh, well, that's balloon debt because you got, well, if you look at it individually and don't have revenues to address that debt, maybe you can call that balloon debt. But this is structured debt. You've got the revenues to pay this debt now. That's $2 million. Well, when you get out here to be paying off these bonds, you know, you're down to $1 million. So you've got a good revenue plan in place. It has cost a little bit more because these bonds were put out on the end here instead of layering them on top of debt you are already having to take on. So we think, and we think this is a realistic way to do bonds. We try to avoid it whenever possible, but there are simply times to minimize the impact on taxpayers and ratepayers that we've had to do this. Well, long story short, real long story short, and normally when I have to carry a stack of papers that I can't, that don't slide off, that are trying to slide off the podium here, that's an indication maybe there is too much paperwork involved. Long story short, what the comptroller's office has said, and in all honesty, I don't think very professionally to you all as council members, they've said they expect you in the future to do, try to do all your debt level from the outset and not do any of this type structuring, which has worked well for you. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's fine. And to the extent that, as long as we continue to work with you, as new projects come up, we'll certainly attempt to put structures together that minimize the impact on your taxpayers and ratepayers, and at the same time, try to meet the regulations. So what this particular amendment to your debt policy indicates is that your, essentially your goal will be to do level debt on all your bond issues in the future. And if you can't do that, we'll write a nice letter to the comptroller's office and ask for permission to do something other than level debt. That's essentially the changes. We have put a new appendix at the end of your debt policy that's called the Balloon Debt Management Plan. And essentially what it says, the goal of this is to manage, reduce, mitigate existing balloon indebtedness and to, in the future, issue debt with level principal payments or a level debt amortization. So I don't think it's, I think it's making a mountain out of a molehill in terms of all this work that's had to go into this, but we do what we have to do to meet state and federal regulations. The refunding stands on its own. The comptroller, they don't really approve the refunding, but they have sent your letter. They've reviewed the refunding and essentially approved the refunding. The letter they sent you that used words like reluctantly addressed the balloon debt issue. And I guess they're just trying to get people's attention. We've got three clients, Dyer County, Johnson County, and Lawrenceburg now that have received the same letter, and it's all for the same reason. In one case, a county had to build a jail, and they had existing school debt. So instead of, you know, beating the taxpayers over the head, some of the new jail debt was structured around and beyond the school debt. So, you know, it's a situation where the folks that are requiring this don't work in the world that you and I do. And don't, don't, I don't mean that critically, Barry, but they're making decisions that don't include the fact that you all have to face the taxpayers and the ratepayers every day, where the rubber meets the road. So this is fine and good, and I think we do everything we can to comply with the policy. We don't agree with it, and we think there's better ways to do things, but it's a policy that they have. that they have determined to enforce, and we're all kind of the guinea pigs. So we recommend you do, we put all this together for you, and we do recommend you do update your debt policy to reflect the effort to utilize level debt each and every time you do a bond issue. That really has nothing to do with the refunding. The refunding is of bonds that were issued years ago, and the decision on the structure of those bonds was made back then. We can fix that now. You don't want to see the result, though. One way to fix that balloon debt they're talking about is to refund the SRF loan and put it out another 20 years. You don't want to do that. Every fix to the balloon debt structure that they're saying you have, as shown in the chart, would cost the city of Lawrenceburg and the utility system money. So we recommend you move ahead with this and then move ahead with the refunding, and we need to talk about it for just a minute when we get to that resolution. I've rambled, but it's a rambling situation.
This is going to a fixed rate?
Oh, but already is a fixed rate. You're going to a 179 from a 4% rate. You're already at a fixed rate, but you're cutting your interest rate in half to get those interest cost savings that we mentioned earlier.
For the record, C.L., I agree with you. So sometimes I think the comptroller's office oversteps their boundaries. We know how to do business here that's better for our citizens than they do, so, but at least they've left the gate open. It's for our approval or disapproval, so I appreciate that. So the first thing we have in front of us is a resolution that's been announced, and this is just to amend our debt policy we currently have to include the balloon debt paragraphs that are in there. So, C.L., thank you for explaining that. Is there any other questions from council that C.L. might can answer while we're on this?
Well, I got one question. In the third paragraph of this letter from the comptroller, it says, "As a result of the structure, the city's debt service does not provide the city with any debt capacity in the water and sewer fund for debt, future debt issuance, without the possibility of a substantial rate increase." Is that true statement?
That's, that's kind of like saying the sun came up this morning, Councilman. It very well may take, it has nothing to do with this. It may take rate increases to do future projects. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody.
They have a little capacity starting in 2020. They have about 80,000, well, yeah, about 80,000 a year probably in 2020.
Right. As time goes on, debt capacity is in the eye of the beholder, really. Debt capacity, as exemplified in this chart, is this area right here. What they're looking at is when you, they're looking at it from the perspective of simply that one bond issue, 2008 bond issue, without taking into consideration the rest of your debt. But you do have debt capacity. I think they're looking at this through, with blinders on. They're not looking at the big picture. But, yeah, you've got debt capacity out here as time goes on, but it very, you know, we don't know what's coming down the road. It very well may take rate increases, but it hasn't got anything to do with this.
This package we've got here, which is one of these rate charts, is, are we changing to this? Is it this one here?
It'd be water and sewer. Well, you're changing GO a little bit because it's a smaller piece of a refunding, but it's water and sewer.
What I'm going to ask you, are we saving any time as far as taking it out to, it's still going to be to 2030 on the payoff?
Correct. We don't change it. We can back it up, but then...
But we're not borrowing any more money.
No. No.
Which is what everybody does in the real business world all the time, structure and restructure debt.
Well, now, you're essentially keeping the same structure for the same term, just that you're reissuing at a lower interest rate, a lower interest rate. I answer your question.
I think the term balloon kind of scares somebody a little bit.
It scares me. It's just inaccurate. It's almost simplistic.
If it was the only piece of debt they had, it would be balloon debt, but it's not the only piece of debt they have.
And if there weren't revenues anticipated to be available to pay for that principal, but there are.
Any other questions for C.L. while he's here? If not, this is just, this is not for the debt itself. This is just a resolution for updating the policy, our debt policy that's on the table right now. Make sure we're clear on that. So if we have any other questions relating to our debt policy that the city of Lawrenceburg would be adopting, and the updates to it? All right, so we had stepped out of order there. Do I have a motion to approve our debt policy or disapprove?
If it's going to save the rate payer's money, I think it's a no brainer, so I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I've got a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I'll second. All right. Any further discussion on here? Seeing no further discussion, if you're in favor of this resolution, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then that resolution is approved.
Next gentleman is a resolution authorizing the sale and providing the details of not to exceed $5,120,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016B of the city of Lawrenceburg, Tennessee, and providing for the levy of avalorem taxes in connection there with. That resolution is for your consideration this morning.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Got a second?
Second.
I've got a second, and we'll bring this to discussion. This is the resolution itself authorizing the sale of these bonds and the reissuing of the debt, or refunding of the debt that C.L. just spoke of.
One more question, probably, hope it don't take us off base or anything, but you said that what the comptroller and the state were looking at, is to refinance the bond earlier in the year. Has this letter got something to do with refinancing more than one bond in a year? I'm just curious on that.
No. I'm not, I'm not sure, Robin, where...
I'm not sure I'm asking the question right. You said something about the cause of we refinanced a earlier bond in the year.
Oh, we, and that's where I probably said too much. We try to limit, and the city tries to limit, your issuance of any kind of debt except for taxable debt, there are exceptions, to $10 million in any one calendar year. And the reason we do that is when we sell your bonds, we can achieve what are called tax, I'm sorry, bank qualified bonds. There are tax advantages to banks bidding on your bonds if they bid on them as, under those circumstances, where you've issued under $10 million a year, favors small issuers. Trying to stay under that $10 million limit, last year, we put off the last refund, piece of refunding last year till the first of this calendar year in January or February, early this year. Issued about $5 million, $4.5 million worth of refunding bonds then. So we have to strictly, we have to size this bond issue such that we don't go over $10 million in this calendar year. So I think that's what I was getting at. And as a result, what's in this resolution to stay under that $10 million is the GO piece and most of the water and sewer. If we, if we put them all together, we would exceed the $10 million limit. Now, in all honesty, from a pure financial point of view, it would make sense to do the water and sewer piece first, actually, but in trying to put enough in here for both the city side and the water and sewer side, and then put off the remaining water and sewer till early next year, was kind of a compromise happy meeting. So I didn't mean to confuse you there, but the earlier bonds we were talking about was the last piece of the 2015 refunding that we hit in early '16 to stay under the $10 million limit.
One more question, you talked in 1.7% interest rate fix. Do we have other bond money out there right now that's above that that we can do in the future that we may have trouble with?
I don't think so. That issue to do your treatment plant was a significant project for the city, and it was a big financing, relatively speaking. But there's, there's no other balloon that the comptroller, that, I'd have to look back, but I think we're in good shape on that.
1.7% interest rate, pretty good.
It's, it's nice.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so the only question I would have, and I should have asked this earlier, guys, this is a GO bond because it's in credit support for revenue supported debt, which is, comes through our water and sewer department. So I guess the question would be, can we have the confidence here that we, that the rates are going to be in place, that we don't have to fall back on the GO portion of this? And so, have you got something in motion going forward to support this debt?
We're already covering the debt, we're just refinancing it with the lower interest rate, so we're already paying.
But even in the future, we've got a plan to, it's a plan to cover this debt. We've got the rates are in place to cover the debt.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing no further discussion on this resolution, if you're in favor...
Mayor, this needs to be roll call.
Need to be roll call?
Yes, sir.
All right. Joyce, you call the roll force. If you're in favor for this, let me know by saying aye, and if you're not in favor, let me know by saying nay.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Sevier.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Durrell. Aye. All right, with unanimous eyes, that resolution is approved.
That's all the business I have today, Mr. Mayor.
Would any other council member have any business for the city of Lawrenceburg? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
This meeting is adjourned.